So because tonight is the, we're starting with a public hearing on the tentative budget. After the public hearing is closed, we'll go into reorganization, reorganization meeting. And then at the third part of this tonight will be the regular meeting. And we'll probably do the pledge one more time for the regular meeting. And then we'll do our moment of silence for folks in the military and armed services and local or passed away or in action. So as part of the tentative budget, I'm just going to read off the portions of the budget, each section and the total. And then after I read it, anybody can come on up to the podium and have your comments entered into the record. Per the clerk, all the necessary notices have been put in the paper for tonight's public So we're starting in the general fund. We go over revenues first. Real property taxes, again staying within the state mandated, mandated 2% tax capital is $3,612,625. Interest and penalties is $30,000. Sales taxes, $1,366,934. Utility gross tax receipts is $65,000. Franchise fees is $75,000. Property maintenance, $5,000. Vital statistics fees, $1,000. On-street parking meters, $15,000. Public safety, $15,000. Interest and earnings, $41,500. Rental of property, $28,000. Business occupation licenses, $10,000. Fines and forfeiture bail, $10,000. Minor sales, $500. Sales of equipment, $500. State revenue sharing, $45,000. Mortgage tax, $25,000. Other general aid, $5,000. Consolidated highway, $25,000. Other cultural and recreation aid, $10,000. Inter-fund transfers, $151,000. Total revenues, $5,537,059. We're also appropriating $550,000 from last year's budget to bring the total revenues of $6,87,059. So we move into the general portion, and again, these are the total expenses for each line. Board of Trustees, $37,000. Mayor, $24,000. Treasurer, $135,000. Budget, $2,500. Purchasing, $58,000. Clerk, $155,000. Attorney, $90,000. Engineer, $55,000. Elections, $3,000. Buildings, total buildings, $75,000. Central garage, $27,500. Technical support, $35,000. Unallocated insurance, $245,000. Municipal association dues, $2,250. Judgment claims, $5,000. MTA tax, $8,500. Contingency, $50,000. Central communications, $330,000. Police department, $1,460,000. Traffic control, $15,500. On-street parking, $20,000. Fire department, $150,946. Animal control, which is the tariff program, is $600. Register is $1,000. Street administration is $129,900. Street maintenance is $324,000. Street maintenance chips, $5,000. Snow removal, $113,000. Street lighting, $85,000. Sidewalks, $20,000. Parks, $71,000. Beautification, $25,000. Youth programs, $5,000. Historian, $1,000. Celebrations, $10,000. Senior citizen center, $15,000. Storm sewers, $25,000. Refugees and garbage, $5,000. Street cleaning, $14,000. Benefits, $1,480,000. Serial bonds, $275,000. Bond anticipation notes, $365,363. Reserve funds, total of $133,000. For a total general fund appropriations of $6,87,059. Water fund. Metered sales, $585,000. Water service charges, $1,500. Interest and penalty, $12,000. Water other rents, $400,000. Interest and earning, $10,000. Minor sales, $1,500. Total revenues, $1,010,000. We're appropriating $160,890 from the fund balance to bring us a total revenues of $1,170,890. Here's the appropriation section of the water fund. $20,000 for total engineer. $44,000 real property taxes that we pay on our reservoir. $40,000 contingency. Water administration, $22,875. Purification and filtration, $168,765. Distribution and distribution, $420,750. Benefits, and these are for folks that are, we carry for retirees. Other than that, we have no new benefits because we don't have employees, we have contracts. $80,000. Serial bonds, $79,000. Bond anticipation notes, $220,000. Inter-fund transfers, $75,500. For a total of $1,170,890. Sewer fund. Sewer rents, $950,000. Interest and penalties, $30,000. Sewer rents and other governments, $2,000. Interest and earnings, $5,000. Inter-fund transfers, $35,700. Total revenues, $1,022,700. And we're appropriating $80,500 from last year's sewer bill for a total of $1,103,200. Here's the appropriations for the sewer bill. $5,000 for the engineer. $25,000 for contingency. $358,000 for sewer administration. Sanitation sewers, $77,200. Sewer treatment, $279,500. Benefits, $40,000. Again, those are for retirees that we are carrying there, but we don't have any new benefits because it's contracted out. Serial bonds, $28,000. Bond anticipation notes, $225,000. No vehicle reserves. Inter-fund transfers, $75,500. For total appropriations of $1,103,200. Those are the revenues and appropriations for the general fund, water fund, and sewer fund. This is the tentative budget. We have the public hearing tonight. Again, we're at the tax cap of 2% for $11.82 per thousand. I'll open it up to...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You need a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing for the public.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Have at it, folks.
Just a quick question. $28,000 for rental property? Can I ask what property that is?
It's any type of revenue we get from...
What's the location of the property?
It's any type of, any type of revenue we get for anything that anybody uses in the village. So one year we had, if you see in the revenues for actuals under $28,000, we took in around $20,000 from rental properties.
Give an example of the rental property.
I can give you an exact breakdown, but I got to get it from the treasurer.
Is that like the parking lot, the parking lot too, or something like that?
It could be. Anything that we generate revenue from, I have to list a spot to collect it.
I was just wondering if it was a regular piece of property that we really don't...
No, no.
Bible choice, member of the village. Couple of meetings ago, you voted, everybody voted, to raise the debt ceiling height 2%. Does that take into account that new ceiling height that you're not going to exceed? But if you go to that ceiling height, it will raise real estate taxes? Is that within this budget?
This budget represents going to the 2% tax gap. So it's a 2% levy increase.
So it is an increase.
Of 2%.
So on the $1,000, what does that mean?
$11.82.
$11.82, okay. Also, I'd like to stress on the board as a whole that people that have rentals would be able to absorb this new tax increase in, with their rentals, and increase their rentals to cover it. People that are on a fixed income would not be able to absorb these tax increases that seem to be going up every year. If there are increases, I'm only putting this out there because you're doing this to help the community. If there's increases in there for the mayor or people on the board, maybe you could forego them this time because you did go another 2% and you are going to go to that 2% with this budget. I mean, you do work for the community. And hopefully you advertise for the community as to what's going on with the present economic situation. The other thing is, as to the water, because it's part of the budget, we are going to now work on the filters because a couple of meetings ago, we did vote to move water fund to water fund because there was excess into the general fund. But now maybe we'll get that back and at least start working on one and two filters at a cost of $400,000, $600,000 apiece. But I think the number was $400,000 apiece because that's what our engineer said. And maybe we'll have some movement on that in this coming year. Thank you so much.
Any other questions on the budget?
I got one more question.
Sure.
I see on the revenues here that we're going to get for parking, $15,000.
Yeah.
In estimate. But yet the budget, the appropriations for that position adds up to $20,000. Is there an alternative that we could possibly save $20,000 and find another way of handling the parking issue? Fifteen, you know, at a dime or a quarter or a nickel. $15,000 adds up to a lot, but I guess it's 365 days a year. I'm just wondering, you know, I'm just pointing out that the...
Yes.
It's maybe raise the, may raise the parking rate so that, that we at least cover the cost of parking enforcement. Some, some find a solution to there because it's...
Yeah, the, the parking revenue comes in two spots. It comes from meter sales and also the sale of the electric car charging station we have. So together with those, I'm confident that we'll cover those expenses.
Oh, yeah, the car, the car charging, that's a, that's a real interesting thing. I, I think that should be broken out from parking revenues and have it listed as a line item itself since it's something new and we'd like to judge it year over year how it's doing and whether or not we want to increase even more. That we can see instead of lumping it in with parking meters, nickels and dimes. Because what I've heard is sometimes it's been like hundreds of dollars a month from the charging stations.
Sure, I'll get you that number.
Just have a question about the parks. What is the parks contractual for $45,000?
Could be anything from some new fencing, we're trying to plan on replacing up at the park. We're going to look at probably some of the matting at the park for the, where the, where the equipment is for the kids and stuff like, some of that needs updating and maybe some changes.
So that'll be under equipment, right?
No. No.
And the youth, the youth contractual program, it's budgeted for $5,000, but we spend zero?
Right now we have, yeah. But two things that we want to try to do, it was brought up by some members of the public, and we do take some money out of there for the annual fishing derby. And it was brought to our attention that a lot of residents want to see the DARA program come back. So that usually got, gotten funded from that, from that line. So as we talked with the police chief, and I had to put a number down there to start that, restart that program, so there may, so there may be some training and supplies that the officer may need to start that program again.
Like is there any way to like, since we haven't used it and it's about to be a new budget, couldn't like village like rec, couldn't it be paid for rec? Or like is it, is it definitely going to get used?
Our hopes is to, is to use it, yeah. But like if we didn't use it this year, that's where that fund balance comes from, this, the current budget that we're in. So that's why it's, it's a way to give the money back to the taxpayers by using the fund balance from the previous year. Because if we didn't use that five, we want to put that towards the new offset of the new budget so that you, you do use it to offset the new expenses. So we're, we're hopeful to do some more programs for the youth this year. And so we will at least start with $5,000.
Dr. Brewer, resident of Fort Montgomery, and I have my practice in Highland Falls. I just wondered, is there a line item budget appropriation for ongoing repairs for the 2023 flood? I realize this is tied with FEMA. But right now, I have a parking lot that's falling into the stream. And I did bring a, a survey that shows that the village, that's their wall. For the first several months, they said, no, no, that's your wall. So I finally had to go out and get a survey and say, no, it's about two feet, your wall. And they said, well, we'll contact with FEMA and we'll take care of it. And we're coming up on two years, and at some point FEMA's not going to take care of it. So at what point do I say, all right, I'm looking at you guys to do something? I realize I have some work behind on the parking lot, but the, the wall has got to be done by, by the village.
So the short answer for you is that the, most of the, I want to say 75% of what I read off as the bond anticipation notes is the borrowing that we did for the FEMA projects. So we have some money in capital that we're doing projects with tonight when we do the regular meeting, we're going to pay bills and claims for the Burns Avenue section. That was, that's been completed, the drainage portion. So I'm hearing about this now. So I'll get, I'll have to get back to you, I got to get with my engineer, and we'll see what we can do.
The engineers both agreed and said, yeah, yeah, I know.
So as soon as I talk with them and we'll figure out, we'll figure out a battle plan. And I'll get in touch with you.
Okay.
All right. But that, but we do have those, yeah, we do have those funds of capital.
Right.
And that's what we've been spending the capital, the FEMA, any type of FEMA fixes have been coming from capital.
You know, I saw them build the wall down by the Mytown Market and so on and so forth. I figured if it's just all getting done, and then it just kind of stopped. So I just wonder...
It's also putting in the, the project and getting it approved. So we have a couple of different projects still pending. So we're within the timeline, but we're just, it's a little bit of waiting on the federal government, so. But now that I know that that's an issue, I'll, I'll deal with it. I'll talk with the folks and we'll figure out, and I'll be in touch with you.
I just need a clarification.
Sure.
About moving your soracles. But I understand that because of the financial situation with the state, I know this FEMA within the state, this federal FEMA, somebody said that those funds have dried up.
I have not heard that, no.
Nobody has ever heard? Because of the economic situation?
No, I think those FEMA funds come through appropriations from the federal, from the federal budget, and I think they go through the state as a pass through.
Okay, well, as to what's going on now with federal government with Woke?
With what?
With Woke. Do you think you're going to get those funds?
I'm not sure what one might have to do with the other, but we're hopeful that we're going to get them. If we don't get them, then you guys will be the first to know.
Okay, so who, who is liaison right now between the village and the state as to these federal funds? For the next meeting, will you get some ideas of the movement about these funds?
There's, in dealing with the state and federal government, it's, it's wonderful because you get 10 different people, neither of which have ever heard of each other. So we're, we are sifting through who the contact folks are. And since now I'm in this new position, I have, you know, different responsibilities. So we are trying to, we had a meeting, we have had two meetings already with the engineer and legal and been working with FEMA and stuff like that. So I'll have an update with FEMA probably, if not the next meeting, probably the first meeting in May.
First meeting in May.
Any other questions? Okay, if none for the budget, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there going to be like another one that's not like real, are you guys about to like vote on it?
I will most likely probably vote on it at the next meeting, which will be a workshop. So if you have another question, if anybody has another question and you want to email a village hall, we'll, we'll get an answer for you. But this will be the end of the public hearing, if I get a motion in a second.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Carol, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Olivia. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes? Opposed? Okay, motion carries. So the next part of the meeting tonight is reorganization. And so there's a special meeting portion of that. So a special meeting of the, of the board of trustees of the Village of Highland Falls is held at the senior center, 15 Drew Ave. The meeting was called to order by Mayor DeSalvo at 7:00, right after the public hearing on the tentative budget.
It's called to order a bit before 7:00, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we're, we're a couple minutes before, but we're on schedule. 6:53 for the news.
So we need a motion?
So I need a motion and a second to open up the reorganization.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by trustee Olivia and a second by trustee Carol. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So the mayor, Jim DeSalvo, made the following appointments. Deputy mayor will be James Ramus. Police commissioner will be Jim DeSalvo. Fire commissioner, Jim DeSalvo. Sanitation wastewater commissioner, James Ramus. Street commissioner will be to be determined. Water commissioner will be trustee Peter Carroll. Building commissioner will be trustee Peter Carroll. Building department and code enforcement liaison will be trustee Olivia. Disaster preparedness liaison will be Emma Rogers. And the disaster preparedness deputy liaison will be Eric Smith. DPWEA union negotiations will be trustee and myself to be determined. Right now that contract's settled. Police union negotiation will be myself and a trustee to be determined as that contract is also settled. Multicultural community liaison is to be determined. Town of Highlands liaison will be also trustee Olivia. So I need the following motion and second for one-year appointments. Deputy village clerk treasurer will be Lucina Brown. Attorney for the village will be Elise Tahiran. Labor attorney for the village will to be determined. Budget officer is Jim DeSalvo. Bingo inspector, bingo inspector is chief Jason Torpey. Fair housing officer is Ms. Lucina, why am I not saying her name right tonight?
Luciana.
Luciana Brown. MWBE, she's going to be mad at me tomorrow. MWBE officer is Heidi Johnson. Bogmeadow caretakers are Randy Mesh, James Teedlow, Michael Slapp, Bob Jones, Lisa Jones, Jake Stevens, Catherine Beach, Al Lamaca, Enoch Brown Jr. So I need a motion and a second and a roll call.
I'll make the motion to move the following one-year appointments.
Motion by trustee Ramus, is there a second?
Second.
By trustee Carol, we're going to do a roll call on that.
Trustee Olivia?
Yes.
Trustee Ramus?
Aye.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
And Mayor DeSalvo?
The following will be moved for two-year appointments. Village clerk, Heidi Johnson. Treasurer, Gabrielle Ferrera. Tax collector, Gabrielle Ferrera. Purchasing clerk, Ivan...
Zach Kotelko.
Zach Kotelko. I need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Carol, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Olivia, can we do a roll call?
Trustee Olivia?
Yes.
Trustee Ramus?
Aye.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Mayor DeSalvo?
I need a motion and a second for the official depositories for the village funds shall be JP Morgan Chase, Orange Bank and Trust, Key Bank, Walkeville Valley Federal Savings Loan, Hudson Valley Investment Advisors, and NY Class. So you have motion and a second.
I'll take, I'll make the motion to move that.
Motion by trustee Ramus, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Carol. We'll also do a roll call on that.
Trustee Olivia?
Yes.
Trustee Ramus?
Aye.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Mayor DeSalvo?
I know the editor always likes this part. Motion to approve the official newspaper of the Village of Highland Falls, the News of the Highlands, as the Times Herald record as needed. I need a motion and a second for that.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Carol.
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Olivia. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And I guess we could include that, include that separately. Okay. All regular village board meetings shall be held on the first Monday of each month at 7:00 PM in the village hall, 303 Main Street, Island Falls, New York, 10928, or if necessary, the senior center located at 15 Drew Avenue. The third Monday of each month at 7:00 PM, bills and, the bills and claims, I'm sorry, the bills and claims will be approved at the first monthly meeting and approved at the second monthly meeting in an emergency only. And one meeting of the month, the second meeting, the third Monday of the month will also be a workshop. If designated holiday occurs on the first or third Monday of the month, the scheduled meeting will take place the following Tuesday. The official business hours of the Village of Highland Falls are 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM daily, except Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays. That's a little bit of a change from now. The annual inspection for the village installation of streets will be held on, in June 2025, and we'll figure out a date that we all can try to make that. The annual inventory for the village fixed assets shall also be held during the month of June. The mayor should be authorized to sign checks and to burst funds, village funds, in the event of an emergency or the absence of the treasurer, deputy treasurer, or village clerk. The appointment of JR Robert Folchetti Association will be the village engineer. A reimbursement rate for the authorization of use of privately owned vehicles shall be determined by the IRS federal tax guide, which is currently 70 cents per mile. At pursuit to Section 281.1 of the New York State Bingo Commission Rules and Regulations, Bingo Inspector Chief Jason Torpey is authorized to act in matters pertaining to bingo operations for the village board in the Village of Highland Falls. Discrimination harassment committee will be the village determinant, village labor attorney, when that's determined. That pursuant to Part 5600, the rules and regulations of the games of chance delegated to the following named officers, the responsibility and the authority granted to them by law in relation to the issuance, amended, and cancellation of licenses, license to conduct of investigations and hearings, and the supervision of the operations of games of chance and the collection, utilization, and transmission of fees for a period of one year, shall be the village clerk and the village deputy clerk. That pursuant to Village Law 5-5246, the Board of Trustees... the Board of Trustees authorizes payment in advance of audit of claims for public utility services, postage, freight, and express charges. All such claims must be presented at the next regular meeting for audit, and the claimant of the officer incurring or approving these claims are jointly and severely liable for any amount the Board of Trustees disallows. Pursuit to Chapter 12, 12-2 of the Code of Village Highland Falls, that the continuity of government in the event of an emergency disaster shall be as follows. Deputy Mayor, James Tetealow, George Fallon. Deputy Fire Commissioners, Ken Conley, Emily Green. Deputy Sanitation Commissioners, Joe Murphy and John Jones. Deputy Street Commissioners, Carlo Meyer and Edward Dunn. Deputy Water Commissioners, Kenny Dorsh and John Sibley. Deputy Chief of Police, Kenneth Scott and Thomas Pitt. Deputy Clerk, Amy McCormick Belladone and Jeanette Scott. Deputy Treasurer, Gabe O'Connell and Michael DeSalvo. I need a motion and a second for those, all of those.
Motion.
So, move by trustee Carol, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by trustee Ramus, can I get a roll call?
Trustee Olivia?
Yes.
Trustee Ramus?
Aye.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Mayor DeSalvo?
Yes. We're still rolling with the reorganization. Okay, number six. We all got a copy of the investment policy. I need a motion and a second to approve the Village of Highland Falls investment policy.
Make a motion.
Make a motion by trustee Olivia, a seconded by?
Second.
Trustee Ramus. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also need a motion and a second for the Village of Highland Falls procurement policy, of which the board all got a copy of. I need a motion and a second for that.
Need a motion to accept it.
Trustee Carol made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Ramus. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. I need a motion that the village hall will be closed at 1:00 PM on Wednesday, December 24th, 2025.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Ramus.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Carol. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I need a motion and a second to close the annual reorganization meeting of the Village of Highland Falls.
Motion.
Trustee Carol made the motion.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Olivia. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 7:04 PM. And then I need a motion to go into the regular board meeting.
Motion to open regular meeting.
Second. Seconded by trustee Carol, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So, because this is the start of the regular meeting now, the portion of tonight, we're gonna do the pledge one more time, withstand the pledge.
Pledge the allegiance of the United States of America, the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, ever living, just as for all.
If we can just remain standing for a moment, as we've done in the past, for our folks in the community that may have passed, for our armed service members, law enforcement. So, welcome to everybody for tonight's meeting. Thank you so far, we've, we had the public hearing on the budget. We did the reorganization meeting. I want to thank the board, it's been a lot so far tonight, and leading up to this, the office staff with all the transition and changes. I just want to make a few comments, and I want to thank the public, especially the folks who showed up here tonight. The public hearing went very well. Everybody was polite. Everybody asked questions. We tried to give some answers because it was the public hearing on the budget. And I hope that we can continue this type of decorum as we move through the meetings going forward. I have a whole slew of list of rules and things we need to abide by, ready to go. But so far, so good. I hope we can do that, I hope we can respect each other mutually, whether we're on the board or you're in the public. I would ask that the board members during public comment, listen to the public. It's important to listen to the public during those times. If there's questions asked from the public member, from the members of the public, that when you give your liaison report, you try to answer those questions at that time. It slows the meeting up when we get into a dialogue, and then sometimes things get a little heated at that moment as well. So, if the public comes up and asks a question, we'll make a note of that. If either liaison can handle it, if not, I will help out, or another member can help out, and we'll try to get your answers, your questions answered. If we don't have an answer to the question, and that's okay if we don't, we want to give the right information out, we'll get it to you before the next meeting or at the next meeting. So, that's what I just wanted to say. The format of the meeting will be a little different, and starting in May, we're gonna have a sign-up sheet for public comment. I've been to a lot of different communities. It's good to help the flow of the comments, we're not sure who gets up next, we just call you up. If you write your name on the list, it'll be in the back. The clerk will pick it up after a few minutes before the meeting starts, or just before it starts, and that way, we'll just go off the list. It's important that you get on the list to make the public comment, so that again, we can keep the flow of the public's business for these meetings. We will also reach out to any local organizations that are here at the meetings first, elected officials, if they want to have something they have to say. Sometimes the local organizations are just talking about a fun drive they're doing, or an event they want to do, and that way, they can come up, say their piece real quick. And if they want to go, they can go. Same thing with elected officials, if there's an elected official here from the state, or federal, or town, if they have something they'd like to say, we'll extend them that courtesy to come up first. So, with that, if there's any public comment on agenda items.
As usual, I didn't realize the public discussion was at 6:30. May I make a very quick comment from?
If you can hold off.
What happened again?
If you can hold off to the section of the meeting where you can talk about anything. It's a short agenda, so.
Happy to do that.
Can I say one thing about Agenda Item 6?
Sure.
Just a note, it says here Hudson Valley Welcome sponsored by West Point Association of Graduates. It's specifically by Connect, and it's for Connect, so all the proceeds from the event would go back to Connect. And that's probably my error on the application, but I just wanted to note that for the public.
Can you just?
Okay, please, the mic, thank you. Erin Halli commenting on Agenda Item Number 6. The Hudson Valley Welcome, it says sponsored by the West Point Association of Graduates. I just want everyone to note that it's specifically sponsored by the Connect program, and the proceeds will go back to the Connect program. Is the mic on?
I don't think the mic's on.
Sean, is that, is the mic on that, that's the mic? Thanks, Sean.
No problem.
You always need somebody to push a button.
That's it, man.
Anything else on agenda item? Okay, great. So, new business, Bills and Claims warrant number 2411 for fiscal year 2425 in the amount of $927,267.48, which includes $37,498.46 of prepaid. The largest number of that is the capital, and that was for the Burns Avenue Drainage Project. So, if I can get a motion and a second to approve the Bills and Claims, and we're gonna do a roll call.
I'll make a motion to accept the Bills and Claims.
So, trustee Ramus made the motion.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Carol, and we'll do roll call.
Trustee Olivia?
Abstain.
Trustee Ramus?
Aye.
Trustee Carol?
Aye.
Mayor DeSalvo?
Yes. Thank you. Next on your agenda is the accept and approval of minutes from two different meetings. Meeting March 3rd, 2025, and a village board workshop meeting in March 24, 2025. And I think everyone was present. You know what we're gonna do, we're gonna break these up. Just trustee Olivia, might have been there in person, that's our trustee. So, we'll do the March 3rd first minutes first, so I'll take a motion to approve those.
Make a motion.
Motion by trustee Carol, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Trustee Ramus, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain.
Abstain.
Okay. That's right. So, trustee Ramus was absent at this next one, but he did, he did watch the video and he did read the minutes.
No.
So, we're gonna have to hold off on this.
Actually, that's gonna be interesting because you will never have a quorum, right?
No, just for, just for this purpose.
No, but I mean, March 24th, with the March 24th meetings.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know how you want to handle that.
It can be possible after any election, I guess, right?
Yeah, well, I'll look into how you do that.
Yeah.
Because you will not have three people that were at that meeting.
Correct.
So, no vote, so it's a no vote.
So, just make a note of that, March 24th.
Just table that.
So, we'll table that. Okay. We have a resolution next on the agenda. Whereas an earmarked portion of the village hall reserve will be used for repairs of building boiler system. Whereas $5,592 of revenue has been designated to offset clerk contractual. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approves an amendment to increase appropriations budget A 1410.04 clerk contractual for $5,592, and the revenue code A.2770 miscellaneous revenues for fiscal year 2425. This was for some repairs that we add to the boiler HVAC system. I need a motion and a second.
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, as we do every year, we have a resolution to re levy unpaid sewer bills. We have unpaid sewer and water bills. Whereas the Village of Highland Falls has 205 delinquent sewer accounts in the amount of $106,96.71 remaining unpaid, including late fines from June, December, 2024 sewer billing. Therefore be it resolved that no further payments will be accepted after April 18th, 2025, and that all unpaid sewer accounts for the year 2024 will be relevied onto the 2025, 2026 village taxes. I need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Olivia, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Ramus. Roll call.
Trustee Olivia?
Yes.
Trustee Ramus?
Aye.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
And Mayor DeSalvo?
Yes. So, the next one is for water bills. Whereas the Village of Highland Falls has 151 delinquent water accounts in the amount of $55,573.55 remaining unpaid, including late fees from June, December, 2024 water billing. Therefore be it resolved that no further payments will be accepted after April 18th, 2025, and that any and all unpaid water accounts, we'll typo there, for the year 2024 will be relevied into the 2025, 2026 village taxes. I need a motion and a second for that as well.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Carol. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Olivia. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So, the first couple of, not this one, okay. So, we have a event parade application in front of us. The name of the event is the Hudson Valley Welcome, and the sponsors, as was duly noted, is the Connect. That's a little bit of a change. It is on, the proposed date of the event is June 29th, 2025, and the proposed rain date is June 30th, 2025. And they will need from Cousins Avenue to Drew Avenue. And the time is?
10 to 5 for the event was set up in Tierdome, so it's probably 9 to 6.
Okay, so you have 10 to 4?
We wanted to extend it a little bit longer just because of the ice cream social.
Okay, so the time is gonna be 10 to 5 as the event, but you want to have it from 9 to 6.
That one, thank you.
They'll have some music, they're gonna have a lot of information, they're gonna have things for the younger folks, maybe a few things for the older folks.
Do you want me to talk about it?
If you'd like to.
Okay, should.
Absolutely.
Erin Halli, again, contractor to the Hudson Valley program. So, it's a community fair, similar to River Fest if you've ever been to it. We want to close on the road and bring in all the local businesses. We'll have an opportunity to get a 10 by 10 tent or setup. They can set up whatever they want, they can bring a tent, they can bring a table. They can sell things, they can share things, really whatever they want to do. We are being charged for profit businesses. We are offering free space for a non-for-profit organization. I have applications for everyone to fill out, anyone who wants a spot. And that money, again, will go to the Connect After School Program. And we'll have food trucks, we'll have a fan, we'll have a community seating area near the food, potentially a play area for the kids pending insurance, gotta make sure we're covered on that. But it'll go, it'll be right after the farmer's market, and it'll just be right across the street, just a place to come hang out, get to know all the businesses. We want to bring the community together and also all the new families. That's the day before our day, June 20th, 20th, I'm sorry, June 30th is our day. So, we'll have 1,500 new cadets and their whole families coming in that weekend. They're probably gonna come inside Highland Falls the day before our day, so they can get their passes, make sure they're good beginning of the date. That's why we wanted to do it specifically on that date. So, this is an opportunity for all of the local businesses to showcase to those new families and our local population what it is that they do. And we just, it's a collaborative effort between the village, the town, the chamber, Rotary, anyone and everyone who wants to participate in the planning. You're welcome to do that, just reach out to me and you can be on that event committee, assuming we get approved. We have applied for our intern, we don't have proof yet, but of course, we'll get you guys. We're approved.
So, I have a question. So, the local businesses, you said, are allowed a spot. Do they have to pay for their spot? The local businesses?
That's our plan. One of the things we want to showcase is that the Connect program can be supported by our town. The Connect program is a very expensive program, we're trying to find more partners. And so, this is essentially what they're paying for is a sponsorship that's directly gonna go to Connect. We'll have some expenses, we'll have to pay for the fans, we'll have to pay for picnic tables, but other than that, there should be almost no overhead in the insurance as well. And everything else will go right to the Connect program.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone have any more questions? So, we would approve this day, but we're gonna, it's gonna be pending insurance. So, I'll take a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Trustee Carol made the motion.
I'll second it pending receiving insurance.
Seconded by trustee Ramus.
And with the appropriate change to the organization as well, right?
Yeah.
Do you want me to resubmit it?
We might have you just do an update of one, no big deal. So, motion, second on the table, no other questions. I'll take a motion, I mean, a vote to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, the next one is the Chamber of Commerce Car Cruise Season and Second Annual Chambers of the Best of Car Show. So it's the Town of Highlands Chamber of Commerce. You see the documentation filled out there? It's for a bunch of days. It's a blanket almost, so it's Saturdays, May 17, June 14, July 12, August 16, September 13, October 4. And there's also rain days of May 18, June 15, July 13, August 17, September 14, and October 5. I talked, I had talked to some of the trustees and initially we may have been some concerns about, you know, the length of the program, but I think we're just gonna approve it and anything, if anything comes up, we'll just talk with the chamber, try to deal with it then. But hold on, you know, for whatever reason, if it's conflicting with something that we aren't thinking about now or whatever, but we're, we're gonna approve it tonight, again pending insurance, right?
We have the insurance.
Yeah.
Insurance is done.
We have the form?
I don't have it.
Okay.
I'll make sure that you get it tomorrow.
Did you want anything as a chamber?
Sure, I have a couple things for.
Just for this?
For that, so that, all right, let me get it, thank you. Sally Dorst, Vice President, Chamber of Commerce. So the idea, so last year was our very first car show that we had, and it was a huge success. We had a lot of fun. Same thing is gonna happen with these car shows. We had multiple vendors, we had multiple food trucks, the cars were amazing. Sorry? So, so what we're gonna do is, is where there's businesses that do the food, we're obviously not putting the food trucks in front of their businesses. But we had multiple vendors also. So we had, you name it, the whole street was full of vendors.
Where are the cars parked?
Sorry. Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
She was, she was talking.
I know.
So the cars were parked from Cousins, Cousins, I believe.
Yeah, you want Cousins.
From Sacred Works, all the way down, this, the north end.
So Cousins Avenue to Drew.
Right, thank you. And the, this, this basis, I have to look this way, and this basis of each one. We had, last year for our first car show, we had approximately 55 cars. And we, we are also, so we're working with the Bear Mountain crews, they're helping us do this, and, and it was amazing. So the object of the thing is, is to bring in a lot, we had a lot of foot traffic that day. Some people came as far as Connecticut. It was, it was a lot of foot traffic. And that's the thought, get that foot traffic in here for our businesses. And the same thing, businesses are helping to open up and have tables outside too. And that's gonna be every month starting May, and hopefully have a lot of fun and bring in that foot traffic. So that's that.
Thank you. So if there's no other questions from the board, again, we're, we'll approve pending we get the insurance certificate. So you guys okay to go with it? I need a motion.
Motion?
By trustee Olivia. Seconded by trustee Carol. All in favor? Pending insurance? Opposed? Motion carried. The next one is the Easter Bunny Photo Op fundraiser for the Fourth Annual Community Family Fund Day. It's sponsored by the Town of Highlands United Youth and the Town of Highlands Chamber of Commerce. It's the Fourth Annual Community Family Fund Day is in June. This will help raise proceeds for that event. The proposed date is Saturday, April 12. No rain date, and the event timeframe is from 10:30 to 1:30. I guess that's set up a takedown, but the actual event time is 11 to 1, which doesn't conflict with the other Town of Highlands program and the Easter egg hunt, which I believe ends at 11.
Yes.
And you wanna do that at Memorial Park at the gazebo, and I met with the chamber and United Youth, and we're just basically using the gazebo and some mild declarations at Memorial Park to do this fundraiser. Again, it would be, we would just need insurance for the, for the day, but I think we can approve it pending insurance. Unless the board has any questions. Good, I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second pending insurance.
So we have a first and a second pending insurance, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, last one is the Fort Montgomery Elementary School Field Day. It is on June 5, 2025. The timeframe of the event is 8 to 11. They need road park baseball field, pavilion, bathrooms. Expected number of folks, 200, cars, children, no police, alright, and this is a school event, and so they have the insurance attached to the map. So we are all set with all this, anybody have any questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Ramus, make the motion, second. Trustee Carol, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes? Opposed? Motion carried. Next on the agenda is for me to, it's for the board to approve me to sign a purchase of Badger meters for water. We are starting a program for the water to replace meters, so this will get us going. These are very intricate new meters, they have very, very limited part, moving parts, they actually use magnetic. And the good thing about this is that it will have, it will have an app hooked to your phone, and they just specialize, and this is a sole source vendor. They'll have an app on your phone, you can monitor your water flow, if you have a leak, it'll send you an alert. Very, very user friendly, this is what we're gonna start doing, we're gonna start doing meters, so many meters every year. It's part of the taking care of the meters that are eventually going bad. The meters that we all have in our house now have an expected life of around 15 years, so we're getting to that number. So we wanna start replacing them now. So this will get us the first 100, and then we'll move forward as we continue to purchase and replace. The total expense was roughly $45,595, of which this first set will come from a water reserve account we have for equipment. So it's a good program, these folks specialize in this, it's a very good price, we've checked it. And like I said, these are sole source item. So I need a motion and a second to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by trustee Olivia, second.
Second.
By trustee Ramus. Discussion.
So, second to last page, one-time, um, star total?
Yeah.
Six grand?
Yeah.
Is that, is that included in the?
Yes, so there, there are some one-time fees that we'll pay, but we won't have to worry about those again going forward.
For the next year, this won't be in there, so we're looking at a reduction in that hopefully, depending on the cost of the meters.
Yep.
All right.
Any other questions? If not, I'll take a roll call vote on that.
Trustee Olivia?
Yes.
Trustee Ramus?
Yay.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Mayor DeSala?
Yes. Then last thing on the, in our packet is we have a authorization for the, for me to sign the management agreement for the Sina Hudson Land Trust. This was worked out by my predecessor and also Sina Hudson, who many, many meetings, who's in negotiations. And basically what this covers is, is for three-year, it's a three-year contract for us to do a general maintenance and housekeeping on the trail. In addition to that, they will offset our expenses at the tune of $10,000 a year annually, to be paid monthly.
No, is it monthly?
Is it monthly? I think it's monthly. If it's not monthly, it's quarterly.
I don't know if that's even covered in the contract, how it's paid, but subject to working out how it's paid.
Okay. I'm sure they'll be okay with monthly or quarterly, whatever, once a year is fine too. But that's the negotiated deal, it's for three years. Anything over certain, if the repairs get too crazy, or if there's things that we have to get them involved in, it's all spelled out in the contract. Again, it was some time with negotiations, I think I wanna say it was six months, maybe more.
Yeah.
So as, you know, they don't necessarily have to get into this contract with us, I'm sure they could probably hire a private vendor, but it was a way to get some revenues back from some of the tax dollars that we did lose from the sale. Again, you know, we can't control who buys what, and you know, Sina Hudson bought the property, and kudos to them for having the funds to do that, and the folks who owned the property sold the property. It was just land before, so this does generate a little revenue to offset what we didn't have there, or we don't have there anymore.
Mr. DeSala, can you please table that decision until next week? There's some things that were brought up in a public hearing that I'd like to, to make you aware of.
Well, I'll certainly listen to public comment, and then it's up to the board if they wanna hold it or move forward with it. I don't know what, I know there's a lot of things that came up in the public hearing, but I think they had a meeting about emergency services, didn't you? With the chief and the both chiefs and.
Both chief and Captain Jeff.
You have anything in substance you wanna bring up, Mr. Tito?
Just on this subject, yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
So.
The board's okay with that?
Okay, that was a great meeting. One of the main issues that came up is that Sina Hudson has beaded over to us a cul-de-sac in order to provide a turnaround at the top of Regina Road. If the village performs that work, it will have to be prevailing wage, and that could cost village taxpayers $100,000 for a simple turnaround because of the requirements that the state puts on a cul-de-sac. So I, I think that, and there's other issues that other people are looking into right now. I, I commend this young lady for doing a lot of work, but Sina Hudson has always purchased land in our community, taken it off the tax rolls, and provided us with a little incentive. I, I think that we all need to do a little homework before we make that decision.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure how that would affect this contract, the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, so I understand what Mr. Tito is referring to, and I, and I think trustee Carol may be able to add to this because he lives literally right there. The village, I don't know if everybody knows this, it's off of.
It's Regina?
Yes. So Regina, Regina starts on Main Street, goes down and around, and comes, comes to basically a dead end. And for a long time, the last house on the left, when we would plow snow, or for any reason that a municipal vehicle was down there, we basically had to go in that person's driveway to turn around. So whether it was the middle of the night for plowing snow, or fire truck, and get in there for whatever, we had to go into this property owner's driveway to turn around. So long story short, the previous property owner basically let us do a turnaround up there?
Yes.
And so I, I don't know what more we need to do on the road to just do it as a turnaround. It's really not a cul-de-sac, because it's just, there's only houses on one side of the street there. So the turnaround really just for plowing snow and talking with Mr. Jones from DPW. I, I don't, and I, I don't wanna, I don't know if the two things are linked, I understand what you're saying, they could potentially be linked. I don't know what this would happen if, if we didn't approve this, and then we gotta go back to the drawing board, you know, I don't know what, where that puts us.
I guess.
I'm gonna take a little advice from counsel, which.
Yeah, I, I think that this, this has been negotiated over some long period of time. Sina Hudson has been amenable to doubling the amount of money that they're providing to the village to cover any costs of the village maintenance. It's a very good, I think the village has determined, aside from not having any authority to intercede it, it between a buyer and seller, that this part will be a big advantage to the village. I think also that Sina Hudson is before the planning board and needs certain approvals to move forward before the planning board for site plan approval, I don't know where that stands right now, you might either. And I don't really understand, so if Sina Hudson has given the village property for a turnaround, is that what I heard, Mr. Tito?
That's the way I understand it.
Okay, so then that too seems like a benefit to the village.
Yeah. I'm, I'm sorry.
Hold on one second.
I don't understand how it could be a benefit if taxpayers are gonna have to absorb $100,000.
But that's speculation, first of all.
No, no, it's not speculation, this is my business.
Okay, wait a minute, let's not talk that out, I understand what you're saying, let me just get a minute to comment on that. So I understand his point, but I don't know what we have to do there, if anything, that's my point. Because we don't, it's not a thoroughfare, it's not a pass-through, it's literally to turn around a commercial vehicles when we plow. So my last question is, is if we needed, if for some, any reason that we needed to get out, I know usually we have like, we could get out of a contract if we have to get out of a contract, is that in here?
Not really, this, the, the term is, I have to look at the term.
Three years.
The term is three years.
Yeah.
But the likelihood of, I, you can't just get out of it, the term is three years. If you needed to renegotiate at the end of three years, you could look at that. I, I just don't know what connection that particular concern has to do with this management project.
Good evening, I'm Heather Blakely with Sina Hudson. So I think at the, at the time we purchased it, this was some time ago, not in relation to the park planning itself. Sina Hudson outlined a right-of-way at the end of Regina specifically, yes, so that the, the road, Regina could be turned, you know, people could use that, turn around, not have to use some, someone's private property, private driveway. Right now, it's, and that's, this is not really part of the park planning per se, and this was, there was no requirement that we, that the village pays it. There's, I think the right-of-way is up to you, if you do want to pave it, right now it's not. Right now it's kind of gravelly and it, and it grows up with weeds. What is part of the park planning is, this is not gonna be a park entrance, so this is, the main entrance is gonna be a Haven Road. So this will not, that was a lot of the concern and questions that we received at the public hearing. This is not gonna be a main entrance, but again, recognizing that we want to limit, but still have, give the village access, which is sewer line that goes through there, and then through Paragon Hall and out to Havens. A board fence with a gate that's locked, so that public can't drive down there, but the village, PW, whoever needs, you know, emergency access can get down there. We also spoke about the particular entrance with the village fire chief and the police chief and the EMS, EMS captain, so I think that's, that's all there, we're not requiring the village to do anything. I think it's recommended, it, you know, be able to turn around or mow that area if, you know, there's a need to keep that space open and not pull up weeds. So I think that's, that was a question that came up from one of the neighbors, keeping it open.
Go on.
In the past, we talked about this quite a bit, and what we, at one point talked about is the village acquiring the property to use to turn around to the, the inside of the, with the two lamp. to the inside of the, where the two lampposts are. If you, if we did blacktop in there, now, I, the, this is before I was on the board. The village did tell Sinek Hudson that they would take care of the blacktop, and Sinek Hudson said that they would take care of the landscaping, and they did. So, we've been, we on Regina Road have been waiting for them, the town, to come and blacktop it. Reason it needs to be blacktopped is because the Verizon trucks go up there, the Amazon trucks, anybody that's delivering anything goes up there, and they turn around, they have to turn around in Tyree Lanier's yard, where he just spent about $10,000 blacktop, and it's the second time he blacktopped it. Reason he had to re-blacktop it is because trucks turn it around. They get in there and they turn it out, and they've ruined it for him a couple times. And it's right across the street, and they've been nice enough to say that we can use that. So, it's already landscaped, it just needs to be blacktopped. I don't know if it, you know, counts as a cul-de-sac or not.
So, Justice Carol and myself were at that meeting, and some of the comments, not only from the public, but from the planning board members, was about actually access should they need to get some emergency personnel down there. So coming from Havens Road, and if they had to get all the way down to the end of the Phase 1 part of the project, it would be beneficial and much faster if there was an area right there that they could utilize. And I believe there was some discussion about a possible chain to get put up, and I don't know if you worked that out yet, but that's a little bit of background I got, am I correct?
Yeah, so we had a meeting last week, on Wednesday, the meeting with the fire chief and the police captain, uh, police chief and the EMS captain. So we talked through, we had an emergency response plan, it's Sinek Hudson's standard practice for all parks and preserves, and we contact and we update them annually. And specifically, we meet outside, especially with the new preserve onsite, so that all the emergency responders can see, they know the site, it can see where the access points are. In that emergency response plan, we identify any, any of the access points, whether they're open to the public. So, and that information, we map out ahead, so that, and we share that specifically so that emergency responders know where to look. Also, we've also talked about having teacher training to support, so that they can get used to responding to that site specifically. Further down on Havens Road, we looked at a spot specifically where you can get into, onto the trail system without negotiating steps, which are part of the first phase improvements. And that way, according with Stokes Basket, from what I've learned, you can get up there, onto the trail, pretty easily. So that's kind of the logistics we talked about on Regina Road, anything block, gate, we would change extra long, usually fastest way is they cut a link. And we've done knockboxes too, but that's, you know, we've talked about that, we understand. Cutting a link is, that's very good. However they want to get in, we provide those access, or map those access points in those notes. And we actually have a letter of some of the Highlands and its captain kind of endorsing the emergency response plan we put together. So I can share that too with the trustees.
Mr. Salvo, what, what do you, what...
I would say please, the more information we have, the better. I wouldn't be opposed to tabling this to the next meeting, just as I only took off the fazo today. So I have not had a chance to read through the contract fully, so that's my opinion.
So, your next meeting that you have to go in front of the planning board is...
My next planning board meeting is Thursday, the 17th, 4:00 p.m.
Okay, so I'll tell you what.
They may need this to move forward with at the planning board level, too, just so...
Yeah, so I'll tell you what, if everybody's okay with it, let's do a special meeting on the 16th, by the 16th. We need to meet and wrap this up and figure out what we'll do. Are you guys okay with that?
Yes.
You okay with that?
Yes. I'll just note the contract doesn't go into effect until the public's agreements are complete.
Right.
So it's just a matter of moving these pieces aligned together, just so that we can have... And it's already, the plant agreement for the access at Havens has already been signed, so that's a good step forward.
I'm confident we'll be okay, I just, you know, I got some new members and...
Sure.
So I understand you have a April 17 deadline. We're going to meet on the 16th at, is that okay, everybody? It's the day after Tax Day, so you guys should be all okay after that. But we'll meet on the 16th, we'll vote on it, and then that way you have something to present at the 17th.
Okay.
You okay with, you got that in, we'll get that?
What time?
7:00 p.m. on the 16th. And we'll be in, we'll be in village law.
And you'll give, you'll give the rest of the board a little bit more background on that information?
So I won't be here this coming week, but I can make sure the others, Sinek Hudson representatives, or I'm happy to meet with you.
If you have any questions, we have her email address, the clerk has her email address. Please look it over, check it out, any questions, email Heather. It's on, it's on this document you have in front of you. So, and then we'll discuss it. And it is contractual too, so if we have anything that we need to...
Yeah, I'm not sure what changes might be made to the management agreement.
Don't know, but if we have a question from the board, we need to talk about it and...
I will not, I won't be at that meeting, but you can reach out to me for sure.
I think it's more for the board, so...
Okay, well, if you need, if you need anything done to the contract, just let me know.
Yeah, 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 no, I think, okay, so...
Yes.
Thank you. So I have, you okay? I'm going to have a public comment, actually, but I'll take public comment.
Does this work?
It does.
Bonnie Stowe, Court Partner, Mr. ... I made a challenge to Mayor Jimmy, and you met the challenge. I was very doubtful. I, I'm a very big believer that once you go over the line, like we went on, had to go over the line last year, it's so easy to go over the line again. You met the challenge, you did it, I commend you. I believe Dr. Guerrero wanted to go even lower. I think you did a great job, and I don't mind saying it, but what I do want to say is, we're headed for a really big recession, one that we haven't seen the likes of. My father saw the likes of, but we haven't. I think next year, I think you have to keep a very tight budget. Next year, if what I say comes true, you're going to need to help people in ways that we've ever had to help people before. And the fourth person that you put on is going to need to be somebody who can help do that. Just like we had a flood and your predecessor did a wonderful job, this is going to be a different type of emergency. So, please keep that in mind. I know we're, like to enjoy what fruits we can, but it's... I feel like I've been walking with one foot in the mud and I'm waiting for the other foot to get caught. And everyone that I've talked to, I work in an educational environment right now, they all feel the same way. So, anyway, I want to thank you, I want to congratulate you, you're all a good bunch. Ms. Olivia, if you don't talk louder, I'm not, I can't hardly hear you. I had a rock and roll there, and I think I lost some of my hearing. Got to speak up.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Have a good day. Have a good one.
Any other public comment?
Michael Truist, over the village. I just wanted...
I can't hear you.
Oh, I lost my hearing. No, don't, don't. I'm saying that you're right. Can you hear me?
I can hear you well.
Perfect. I just want to reiterate what I said before. Even though you raised the tax ceiling hike to 2%, and you kept it under that 2%, you're still raising real estate taxes. And I'm speaking for the people that don't have rentals, that can't absorb this tax increase. I'm speaking for people that are on social security, that have a house, that's all they have. And even though it's a couple of hundreds, it's still a lot of money to these people. And I would implore you, I know you guys voted to raise it, and Melanie Guerrero, trustee Guerrero, wanted to do attrition, cut things to the bone. So, I implore you to cut this budget to the bone before you hold on. Thank you.
Julie Olivia, Village resident. To start, Jim, I wanted to extend my congratulations to you. You are the mayor of our village. I hope that you will stay true to your word and do good for us, good for everybody. You stated that reviving nature and promoting new businesses was a part of your platform, along with working with all elected leaders. I am hopeful to see you follow through and meet your campaigning goals. I ask that you let the people have a voice this time around and really listen to what we want and what we actually need. I'm wishing you luck with this term, and I look forward to seeing you step up. Peter, congrats to you with your overwhelming win. As an elected trustee this term, I'm sure that you have great ideas, and I hope to be hearing a lot more from you. Mom, I'm very proud of you, if you can't tell, the straightened up looks here. This is an incredible achievement. And to the rest of the board, I trust you to show her the respect that she deserves. She earned this seat the same way that you did, and has an overwhelming amount of support from the people, seeing as she is the people and has been speaking for the people for the past two-plus years. She has really good ideas and will make a positive impact should you listen. Best of luck to you all, as your success, as our success rides on your teamwork. Thank you.
All right, I have a few things for the chamber and also United Youth. This Saturday is going to be very, very, very busy. So obviously, the majority of everybody knows that we have, the town is having their egg hunt. That's at Road Park. Oh, here it is. That's at Road Park, at 10 o'clock sharp, they're going to start it. The littles are going to be at first base, 6 to 10 are going to be at third base. I have the flyers at the back of the table, so if anyone is interested in taking a look at it, it's there for you. The second thing we have going on for this weekend, Holy Innocents Church. They are doing a swing dance with Annie and the Fur Trappers. This is a live jazz band, so it's like line dancing, in a sense. That is, that starts at 7 o'clock. From 7 to 8 o'clock, they're going to be doing lessons, and then the dancing and the music will be from 8 to 10.
How much?
$25 a person. So it's reasonable for a nice man. Town of Highlands United Youth, we are doing a different kind of fun, one of different kinds of fundraisers. We're doing egg R.R., where the kids will go out. You purchase a number of eggs, if it's 25, or 50, or 75. The kids will go out and you'll wake up to a whole bunch of eggs on your front lawn. What else do we have? April 12th again, for this Saturday, is summer youth employment at Holy Innocents from 11 to 2 o'clock. So if you have any kids that are looking for a job this summer, I highly recommend they go to the employment fair, see what they get. And last but not least, the one that I'm actually quite, my heart is with, with this one. So a couple weeks ago, I had Colonel Holchak come in, and he did a presentation on the Honor Flight, the Guardian Honor Flight. He came here, we also went to the town board meeting, and where he did a presentation there also, and the board of the school board. The school board decided that they're going to take this, this program with their district. They have chosen a student to be a guardian for the flight, which is April 12th, that Saturday night. Jay Roxy will be attending that from the school. However, Town of Highlands United Youth, we decided that we also are going to block a bus for our community. It's, it's for free. It'll be coming out of Block 2, the bus, going out to Stewart Airport. We're going to leave at 7 o'clock, we'll be back at 10 o'clock. And this is for anyone and everyone, first 30, I shouldn't say that. It's 30 seats, 35 seats on the bus, it's free. And this flyer is in the back also, for anyone that may be interested that would like to go. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
You want to speak?
Yeah, of course.
Okay. Thanks, Ron Malka, Perry Avenue. I just wanted to say congratulations on Mayor Disalvo winning the election and Ms. Olivia. But, I like what you said, Jim, in that, in that you said, you were appreciative of the public's attitude on the budget, when we're, the public meeting on the budget. And, that makes me wonder why the second monthly board meeting is a workshop meeting with no public discussion. That leaves only 12 meetings a year where the public gets to speak. And yeah, I know, we can send you emails, but a lot of people, a lot of people like to speak in the, in the public eye, because that puts more of an onus on you for an answer. And, you know, why is it, can you, can you change that? I mean, these working sessions, this was the old administration. You have an opportunity now to give a whole new feeling to this community and be, be, much different than in the past. And, and I would hope that you would have discussion, you would let taxpayers, residents, give their questions, their points of view, or for, I like what Mr. Tito said. You know, he's, he's on top of some of these things, it's his distance thing. And, and there's a lot of people in this community that want to help with the community. And we have a lot of volunteer organizations, and we have people who want to attend these meetings and give ideas on making it better. And I would hope that this new board would be receptive to that and, and hold public hearings twice a month. And one other thing, it's the end of March, I changed my water filter. The water's coming in brown. Can you ask the BRI, the water people, to flush the mains? I don't, I think it's been over a year since they flushed the mains. You know, get the gunk out of the, out of the main lines, so the water doesn't run brown, right?
Flush the what?
Water mains.
Oh, okay.
Hydrants. Yes?
Hi, Jen Cordial, I have involved Community Connections. Community Connections, if everybody should know by now, is a nonprofit program here in Highland Falls and throughout the county, it raises awareness, the program that people can, if, if they're visiting. can, can, and visit the communities. We are very excited to say that the Highlanders will be spearheading the opening up of the Century Garden. And they will be...
Do you want to also try to go out?
They will be, they will be starting a plant. It'll be spring garden, and our kids will be doing the planting. We're actually partnering with Woodbury and Cornball for some sensory programming and fundraiser events in the Century Garden, and we're expanding our community awareness. The awareness really is for children that are out districted from the district, or academics, to really do programming here. And we're always looking for volunteers. We're looking for, you know, donations for gardens, seeds, plants, things of that nature. But there's a lot of exciting things coming up, so be aware of it. And if anybody wants to come out and help us move the fence this spring, please get in contact with me.
I'm gonna go first. I have a, a number of issues. I wanna remind this board that Mr. Lanier's property, his private property, I'm sure he doesn't encourage the turnaround space that we need. Senior Hudson has identified that it's gonna bring tourists in to our community, this new walking path, .7 miles. Those tourists, inevitably, 50% of them are gonna end up on Regina Road. I don't know how, how happy the, the people in Regina Road are gonna be. It's a very private community. I think that this board really needs to look at identifying and basically engineering the proper turnaround up there in order to get people in and out of there. I would hope that this board can support local businesses. Tell the community, support local businesses. That should be our agenda item. Thank you to Mr. and Mrs. Scott for opening up a little store in our, in our village. I think it's the first one in a long time.
What's it called?
Aides.
Oh.
Agenda item. Can we add zoning to the agenda item? Last year, it took us 16 months to get a couple of decisions made. Can we look at that every day? I love Mr. Malachi's idea of having a public speaking on every, at every meeting. So, can we add agendas? Can we add zoning to the agenda? Sidewalk. Can we extend this sidewalk on Main Street down to Pellwood Lake? Another 100 feet, 150 feet every two or three years? Maybe we'll get to the high school. This isn't directly pointed at Mrs. Olivia. This was the previous administration. We, as taxpayers, need to know why someone is voting no on, on a payment. If there's a problem with that bill or the identification of what has been done, we would like to know about it. So, to simply vote no, I ask that this board identify why the decision is known to pay bills and claims. We talked about Senior Hudson. Please do your homework. Notaries in the village. Does the village hall have a notary? We're working on it, right? Is there a possibility for a local law to be put in place that all banks have notaries? All blank banks have notaries?
Chase has a notary.
Never there. Okay.
It's no.
Okay. It should be a law. I mean, the senior citizens try to get into the town hall, and sometimes it's not open Saturdays, I understand. But these, these community banks, yours is the only community bank that has a notary. All the banks in our community should have a notary. Okay? And they shouldn't pay, we shouldn't have to pay to get something notarized. Mr. Dunn identified that the senior buildings, senior multifamily housing in our community is 70 feet high. He did that probably six months ago. Six months ago, we, as a community, as a board, knew that someone has the ability to build a 70-foot-high building for seniors. And again, you know, it just, it just keeps going around in circles, around in circles. Thanks AOG for the Connect Program. Thank you to Erin, and I think it's Chris. I don't know if Erin's still here. That Connect Program provides teaching programs for our juniors, our, our kids, and it also helps the fathers and mothers that don't have to run home to pick up their kids. I have one more complaint. Technology. Why do our police cars have to run every time they're parked in front of the police station? Can't tell me, and I know the chief has a reason, can't tell me that we don't have technology that identifies where that police car is at all times? And, to think that Orange County needs to know where that police car is, they don't even know where Highland Falls is. So, as long as our dispatchers know where the police cars are, that's, that's fine with me. So, can we look into some type of technology that will, instead of running these cars all hours of the night? Thank you.
I was wondering about the, what is the criteria for the village to sponsor an event? I've only known the village to sponsor one event. The fishing derby. All these other events that are trying to do good for the community, why won't the village sponsor it? Did, did the fishing derby have to provide insurance? Other organizations that children are volunteering and fundraising, they're required to bring insurance. That would alleviate so much pressure off of fundraising group to just say, hey, we'll sponsor it. Don't worry about it. Is there a certain criteria? And the, the $5,000 for the boiler fix, don't we rent village hall? It's owned? And all the, the question I asked before about the budget, about that it doesn't get spent, that it'll draw over to next year? Like the sidewalks. No money was spent on sidewalks last year. You can walk around the built. A lot of these streets, Liberty Street for one, needs sidewalks, they're falling apart. That is where infrastructure's gonna come into play. If you always are trying to save the money for the next year, you need to put it into the infrastructure. That's all I got.
Mike, is it something new?
Yes.
You sure?
You might not know it from the ponytail, but I am a retired engineer. I served this country proudly. Actually, I've served two countries proudly. The reason why I bring that up is that Highland Falls would not exist without West Point. I'm sure West Point would not exist without Highland Falls. So, you would kill two birds with one stone. By working with West Point, getting in touch with a reserve organization, excuse me, like was the case when I was active. Where we did community projects, logistically, for the reserve unit, it would be cheaper. And it offsets a lot of the costs on that community. Because the reserve unit gets practice. They have very efficient operators. They have engineers. All you have to do is reach out. And don't be afraid to hear the word no. Or maybe, more often than not, you'll hear, what can we do for you? We would love to do this for you. Thank you.
So, we'll go to board reports. And I know I have trustee Olivia first. But, and I did name some liaisons for tonight. But, you know, the four is yours, or whatever you need. Yeah, I'm sorry. I can go to Pete, Mr. Carroll first. I'm bringing Mike a little closer out.
Okay. As I stated, I have just begun my position as of today. And my liaison duties were just designated tonight, so I don't have very much for you for this evening. Now that I'm on this side of the table, I am compelled to tell you all that I am much more comfortable in the audience, on that side, on the other end of the camera. But, I have spent years on that side, sitting next to a lot of you who are here this evening. And I do believe that with time and circumstance, our perceptions change, and we grow throughout life. And those who have the ability to take action have the responsibility to take action, which is why I am here. I would like to take a moment just to thank you all sincerely for your support in electing me to this position, and also for your faith in me to represent you up here, which is what I intend to do, along with giving my best to work with my fellow board members here to bring positive improvement to our community. So, tonight, I will leave you just with a statement that the power of any government is in the people. So, I would encourage you all to attend a meeting of any kind. Village, town, planning, zoning, even the school, and, or any of our wonderful groups that we have here. The Chamber, the American Legion, the Historical Society, the United Youth, and the Center even. If there is anything that pulls your attention, I encourage you all to please get out there and just start somewhere. And that's it for tonight.
Sure. Heard a lot of good things tonight. Been after one, a couple of them. Like to take this opportunity to thank all the people that actually came out and voted in the village election. You're exercising your constitutional right. And it was great to see the turnout, not only in person, but even some of the absentee houses, which made it a long evening. But, everybody got through it, and we have a new board. So, I just wanna thank everybody that ran. I applaud them for stepping up to the plate.
It's not easy.
It's a big task and a big commitment. So, again, you know, I just wanna give a congratulations to all three of these people that I elected tonight. I was the only old guy left. But, but that's okay. I'll work with anybody. Everybody knows that. I'll talk with anybody. You know, I don't care what's said on Facebook, because I don't want Facebook. So, it doesn't really matter to me. I wanna just, you know, be that person that if you have a problem or a concern, please come up, and we'll try to do the best we can to make this village a shining jewel in the Hudson Valley. That's just my little statement. Just a couple of quick things about saving money. There's a program out there. It's called the Muni Colab. And I'm going to pitch it to the town board because it's something that is done in, or being proposed in some other towns and villages to help alleviate some of the foil requests that take so much time and money, because time is money as well. So, this Muni Colab, it's a program. They will, right now, they're utilizing it or proposing to utilize it at the planning board and zoning board levels, where a lot of foil requests come from in these other villages. And they will set a program up for a cost, and then there'll be an annual fee. So, I'm gonna work with the town board on that, especially at the planning and zoning board level. Give them the information. The town wants to run with it. Maybe we could get them to do that. And then we can see what we can do if it's actually feasible at the village level as well. I'm not sure about that, but we can work on that. So, again, cost saving. You got to print paper. Everything will be online. I think it's a plus for us. So, as far as the sewer report for last month, in March, we treated a lot of water. We only had 4.4 inches of rain, but we treated, on the average, over 900,000 gallons of effluent per day. That's a lot, considering that's up 250,000 gallons from our February treatments. So, again, I know we had a little bit of rain. If you have a sump pump that goes into the sewer in your house, put it outside. Let it go on the road. It's okay. It happens, but when you put it into the sewage part of your house downstairs, you know everybody has the little turn thing there, that costs us money to treat that. And, and we don't need that, because it's groundwater. There's a couple of other places I seen up on Mountain Avenue, where I'm gonna see if we can get the DPW up there. I see when we get a heavy rain, it actually goes right into one of the sewer manholes. If we can redirect that sewer drainage ditch, so it goes to the brook instead, it's water we wouldn't have to treat that's just coming off the side of Mountain. So, Tam hauled out 50,000 gallons of sludge from the thickening down there. We're working on that. We're working on that. We got the sludge transfer pump received. We're waiting on one final price for an installation. Hopefully, some of that can go away. We got a new chlorine feed system installed down there. They done, they have did their maintenance on all the equipment required. I've been down there at least once, if not twice a week, checking on the, the new company. They are transitioning very well down there. The plant looks great. Not that it didn't before. You could eat off the floor. It's kind of amazing in a sewer treatment plant. But, they're doing a good job. They continue to check the pump stations, and their weekly process sample reports have gone down to the DC lab. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Carroll.
I'm still the water commissioner. Oh, and I wanna thank you all for coming out and voting too. That was a good turnout and a good, good show for the community. I wanna congratulate Mrs. Olivia for her success, and also Mayor, Mayor Gisalvo. Ron left me out, by the way. I watched that, I understand. But I don't hold it against him. And I wanted to tell him that, right here on, I was gonna mention it. We, the, the water plant does have the scheduled hydrant, hydrant flusher. Which is in the weeks ahead, they'll be flushing out the hydrants. Have it down here on the five things that I'm gonna read to you. So, that, that will be covered. And what I would do is, I'll put down yours, but anybody that's having problems, I would, you know, you know, call in. Make sure that they're aware you're having discoloration. Let's see, the daily water flow average at the facility for last week was 500,000. That's, that's a very reasonable and good amount. Like I said, a year ago, it was up to 800,000, you know? So, that 500, that's showing how much work these, these BRI guys have been doing to solve leaks and, and problems like that. One of the major problems last year was the high school. Here it says the high school, they flushed their hydrants overnight. They used 200 gallons of water to flush it. 200,000. And that, that amazed me. That's a lot of water, the flushing. Also, during the week, they had a call for a water leak at 62 Mountain Avenue. Either the homeowner or a plumber tried to shut off the curb valve off and caused a leak in the road. They shut the valve off fully, and the leak stopped, notifying homeowners not to turn the valve and to call the water plant going forward. So, I'm mentioning that one just because I hope the homeowners realize that there's no need for them to play with the valves of the street. You can call the water department or the village, and we'll have somebody take care of that for you. That there caused a problem. Received a... Received a high roar, raw water terrarium, filled it. Alarm at two thirty AM on, because of the rain, that was on the first. These, this happens every time it rains. I'm not sure, I'm going to talk to them, find out why, why they have their, you know, such a problem with that. They also had, they lost communication to the main control panel on the third with the PLC overnight and filter operations were lost. Now, they do, are going to take action on that. Price to install a new pressure reducing valve at the storage tanks, that's number one. Number two, and highlighted, is update main control for the PLC when approved. So that they don't go through that again. Schedule the hydrant flushing, read water meters with the computer system and hand out notices to residents that need to be manually read their water meters. So they're very active, they're doing a wonderful job. And, you know, it's a, it's a big plus that we hired them for the company, for the village, I think, rather than, you know, the way we were doing it. I think that's all.
Okay. Thank you. I'm just going to go over a couple of things. First off, Julia, very good public speaker.
Yeah.
Kudos to you. Ondera Parkway, talk briefly about that. The last phase of that project is the paving. We are currently two homeowners away from signing up with the Central Hudson for natural gas for that area. Once those folks decide to do that, and the natural gas pipe goes in the ground, we'll come up with a paving schedule for Ondera Park. I know the folks in Ondera Park are eager to get that done. But we're either going to move on this natural gas or we're not. And if we're not, then we're paving Ondera Park. It's a project that we've had on the books for a while. We spent a lot of money in that area for drainage that was needed. And I think we want to all get that, see that project get finished. Burns Avenue went well, those folks have been waiting probably one of the longest. The previous mayor had mentioned many times, we had Representative Sue Kelly money there. And that's going back a long time. But that road is now, the drainage has been complete on that road. And we will probably schedule paving for that road in the next upcoming months as the plans start to open up, so that road can be finished. The Little League field, as we did it a last meeting, we approved the contract to do the Little League field. And they're moving along, whether permitting. Lots, lots to be done over at that field, it's going to look fantastic. And that whole area, once it's all finished, will also be paved on that side of the league. As was mentioned by trustee Carroll, BRI will start talking about hydrant flushing near soon because we just got out of winter time, so they don't do it during the winter. But it's something we talked about. And also there was a couple of major size leaks that needed to get fixed. So we were mindful of the water amounts we had in the, in the, in the tanks, we didn't want to lose that. So, because hydrant flushing does use a lot of water. And again, if you have groundwater, please call village hall, call the water department, so we'll get you on schedule. Maybe we'll just check and see if there's anything else. We have leak detecting company through the county water authority. Could be a number of things that we want to try to eliminate to make sure that you have the proper water that you're supposed to be getting. The budget and the comments of infrastructure, you're right, there's a lot in the budget that we try to get done in the course of a year. You know, we try to budget so much for sidewalks. Some years we get a grant and we do it, like we've done Main Street, we've done different parts of the village. We did in Memorial Park, we also did on West Point Highway. So there's a lot that we try to get done through grants because just the twenty thousand dollars, just in some sections, just doesn't get it done. The twenty thousand we put in there are for repairs, small repairs. But we have been sitting down with the DPW, we want to try to do more with what we have. So again, it's going to be, I call it the Chinese water torture method. We're just going to chip away at all this stuff a little bit at a time, as long as we're moving in the right direction. So hopefully that answers some of the questions. But we do have constraints, as we hear, as we've all heard on the campaign trail, budget constraints, spending constraints, taxes constraints. So we try to do as much as we can, we try to do more with less, as every municipality tries to do. Sponsoring events. It's a very tricky situation sponsoring events. As the town does do some events, like the electronics pickup, or they sponsor some other type of activity that the town itself, the municipality puts on, they cover the insurance for it. I don't know that we would necessarily have a problem with partnering with another organization. But I think there's so many organizations in town, what does that open up? And does it, does it cause our insurance issues or expenses to go up? I don't know, we'll have to look at it. I have no problem talking with our insurance carrier, seeing if there's some things we may be able to do. I won't commit to anything tonight. But again, that's why if it's a village sponsored event, that we do one thing a year for the youth, it's all encompassing, everybody from the community comes, there's no charge for it, we're not looking to fundraise for it, it's a nice day for all the kids in the community. Similar that we do with the seniors, we have a senior portion of the budget that we try to concentrate on this building. We also try to concentrate on getting grants to upgrade the building. So that's the goal of those two budget line items. But if I think if we start going with different organizations like Rotary, or United Youth, or the Town of Highlands Chamber, or Fourth of July, or whatever, I think we opened up Pandora's box. But maybe there's something we can try to find common ground on that's not a fundraiser, that's not, you know, that we could possibly try to do together. Again, I'm not going to commit to that tonight, I'd have to check into it.
So there's no criteria?
There's no criteria, no, we just, we don't do it, we don't normally do it. The private company, the private organizations always have gotten their insurance, whether it's the road rerun, whether it's the Fourth of July, whether it's the Chamber of Commerce, whatever. If the town wants to do that, the town has the ability to go from the A fund and basically hit everybody's pocket, and if they want to sponsor an event with an organization, by all means. That's their prerogative, and they have that ability. The board, congratulations to the folks who won, so far so good, we've answered a bunch of questions. We're missing one person tonight, it's an appointment that I'm going to make, it'll be towards the end of this month. That appointment's good for one year, that individual will have to run in March of 2026. And then that person actually, if they get elected, or they don't get elected, will actually have to run again in 2027. Kudos to them. So that's fulfilling the last two years of my seat that I was in. So that will come towards the end of the month. Meetings. I have to say that tonight's decorum has been exceptional, except for one or two outbursts from some of the audience members. But all in all, it's been very good, and I appreciate that. But I think, let's not lose sight, let's not lose sight of that three members of the board who are sitting here tonight, minus trustee Olivia, we were also sat in the last two to four years. So things always weren't this nice and calm. And I appreciate that it's calm, that we can have a dialogue and we can hear from the public. But it always wasn't like that. So while I appreciate how we're doing it tonight, and I haven't levied any type of rules tonight, we kind of were doing a little bit of a free form, because it has been going so well. We'll see how time goes. I did mention to trustee Olivia tonight, while we were having a chat before the meeting, that I am very much in favor of doing at least, the work sessions will stay intact. I think it's important for the board. But I will probably most likely move to public comment on agenda items for the workshop. And we'll see how things go for that. Again, the board itself doesn't really get a chance to sit down and iron anything out because we have to do it in public. And that to me is what the work sessions are, and that's what I'm going to task the board with. We are probably going to get into deeper discussions than we've had in the past just because I think it's important that the public hears us communicate, hears us work together, and us come to a conclusion on topics. I want to be able to hear from the public at all times, and I think most of us do, whether it's at a meeting, or it's on the street, or we get an email, or a phone call, or we even see it on Facebook. You know, I don't condone getting involved in a back and forth in Facebook, but if you're going to just stick to the facts, make your comment known, and don't get into belittling one another, then I don't have a problem answering a question. So I appreciate the decorum tonight, I thank everyone for the decorum tonight. You know, it's a tough job up here trying to keep everybody, you know, relatively respectful to one another. But it only works if everybody's participating. And, you know, we can say what we want about the previous mayor, he was here for a long time, he did a lot of good. I understand that we conflict sometimes with one another. But, you know, having a decorum at a meeting allows the public to see that we're doing the business of the community. So I think that's important, I thank you all for that tonight. And just also understand, as trustee Carroll, we also are looking at different areas to pave this year through the CHIPS program that we get from the state. So we're looking at Powell Lake area, Walker Road area, some paving, maybe some drainage as well. So we'll do that as funds come, are permitted. Because it's very important that we keep an eye on our spending as we continue to go into this year and next year. That's really all I had for tonight, except for the police report, which were the total calls, were seven hundred and ninety-eight calls. We had one felony arrest, one misdemeanor, two violations, for a total of four. Eighteen parking tickets, twenty-seven traffic tickets, for a total of forty-five summonses. Meter collections, none, but village ticket fees were five eighty-five. Report fees were eight, and total revenues of five hundred and ninety-three dollars. Mileage was forty, four thousand three hundred and forty, and gas was four hundred and ninety gallons. Again, I appreciate the board's support in keeping a calm meeting. I appreciate the public's support in having a calm meeting. I have a whole set of rules. I have a whole set of rules, I have this gavel here that I don't ever want to use. It was from my student senate days back at SUNY Orange, so I didn't, we didn't have to buy a new one. So, but I, I want this to continue, and it should continue, there's no reason why it can't continue. And I know some folks came late, and just so they know, if you're in the chamber, or you're on a board, or you're elected, you'll get a chance to talk in the beginning. If it's going to get into depth in the whole thing, we'll probably move you around, but we'll try to give you that courtesy in case you have to go to another meeting, or you want to get in and out. So I told Mary Jane that I would keep the meeting to forty-five minutes tonight. Even though this is the annual meeting, and we had two other meetings before, I think we fit into that criteria tonight. So with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, thank you and have a good night.